Good morning and welcome to the regular meeting of City Council on Tuesday, July 22, 2025. Would the card please take the roll?
Mr. Sharland, Mr. Coghill, Ms. Gross, Mr. Mosley.
Here.
Mrs. Kail Smith.
Here.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Here.
Mrs. Warwick.
Here.
Mr. Wilson, Mr. Lavelle, President.
Here.
Five members present.
Thank you, and Councilman Sharland is also present.
Six members present.
For those who are able, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, remain standing for a moment of silence.
My pleasure allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our next order of business is to amend the agendas. Are there motion to amend?
So move.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Our agenda has been amended. The next order of business is proclamations. We have three to be read into the record, two from Councilwoman Kail Smith and one from Councilwoman Gross.
Councilwoman Smith presents. Be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Wednesday, July 23, 2025 to be Amazon Pitt Five and Warriors Affinity Group Day in the City of Pittsburgh. Councilwoman Teresa Kail Smith also presents, be it further resolved, that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Saturday, August 2, 2025 to be Marion Romain Reynolds Day in the City of Pittsburgh. And Councilwoman Gross presents, now therefore be it resolved, that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby recognize Mickey McGrane, the ultimate teammate for his commitment and service to his community, and does hereby declare August 2, 2025 to be Mickey McGrane Day in the City of Pittsburgh.
May we have a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All three proclamations have been approved. Our next order of business is public comment. I would like to remind everyone, the rules of council state, the comments are limited to matters of concern, official action or deliberation which may be before City Council, perfeiting will not be permitted. After your call, please restate your name, provide your neighborhood for the record. You'll be given three minutes to speak. Our first registered speaker is Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller.
Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller, West End, Comulodum, Huddersfield, West Yorkshire, England, United Kingdom. I suggest this city as an ally for us. It is a port city with three rivers converging, eighteen thousand plus in the University of Huddersfield. I'm a Global Intelligence Society candidate for President 2028, Global Information Intelligence Network dot net. In the early 2000s, I became a member of the Modern Language Association and Linguistic Society of America. A council concern has to do with the appreciation of language and literature in the City of Pittsburgh, and Pitt has an English institute, Duquesne as well, and I recommend both of them, a complement CGSII resources in Hausa Arabic, Nihongo, Zhongwen, Hindi, Espanol, Italian, Deutsch, and Navajo. This is consistent with my Initiative Three, no party government but focus on information and intelligence maximum. The English language that we use is a fusion of German and Latin via French and ultimately from India. Now, when I was a boy, living on Stowe Street in Ingram, my German-American father, CJ M. Senior, gave me Arthur and his knights. Arthur, he said, was ein schwert Krieger, Guinevere his queen, non paria. But when I was a young man, living in Valencia, Allegheny County, Richland Township, my Italian-American mother, Virginia A. Rika, watching CJM, watching the movie Camelot, said, Arthur was a Roman named Artorius Redgrave, she said, playing Guinevere AA Cagna. But Varra said she did, Guinevere did give Arthur the Round Table. She was reading Mallory. Now, my work with the MLA had to do with Arthur's stories. I think that the 2004 film starring Clive Owen, I think that is a definitive interpretation of Arthur. When I was at Oxford and the University of London, a Yorkshire historian focused on the supposition of Artorius. I am very dismissive of the Camelot idea from JFK, but I think that we need to intervene where there is predation. That is the basic point of the 2004 film. For Guinevere, I think we should do that for children in Israel.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Jason Bolton.
Hi, Council. I was here last week. I know some of you were friendly. I want to let you know, I'm alive. I'm still in the middle of it, but I want to let you know that it's ongoing. If you can believe it, it appears somebody broke into my house, destroyed my fridge even while an order was in place. They stole my toiletries. They stole the handle to my shower. But I'm still here. I'm not going anywhere. And if you guys hang on, I'll hang on. I have, I want to just go on the record that if it weren't for Magistrate Xander Orenstein, I probably wouldn't be here right now. And also, I want to recognize the overworked Judge Mulligan in the PFA court across the way. If it weren't for them, I wouldn't have something. We still don't have proper orders in place, but they're so overworked, I understand. A couple days, I'm going to be unprotected. But I have something positive that I've been working on. My brain works like this. While I'm trying to solve a problem for myself, I'm thinking about it to people. Sometimes actually the only way to solve a problem for yourself is to realize, oh, hey, this has got to be fixed for yourself too. I don't leave anybody behind. I have some numbers for you I want to share, and especially Councilperson Coghill, you've always been so warm and friendly and open-minded on issues having to do with housing and public safety. But I think all of you are going to want to hear this, because guess what? Philly's already doing this accidentally, and we always want to beat Philly, right? We want to be better than Philly every day. If there was legislation that could fix these problems that saved thirty-five lives annually, if there was something that could be done that could stop one hundred and forty people from being injured in the county, and by the way disproportionately, this is affecting our city as sort of where the seat of the county is. If four hundred and eighty families could be kept out of shelters, shelters, right now, if we just made some simple changes, and they're not even hard, if we could stop what's called coerced removals to the tune of twelve hundred a year, again disproportionately affecting the City of Pittsburgh because it is literally where the effective county seat is. If we could save fourteen million dollars annually, and I can tell you, we could spend a fraction of that to be done, and it's not hard. We can do it. We can do it quickly and easily, and it's not even a difficult thing to do. I would ask Council today, I'm going on the road with this, you know, things are going to happen no matter what I do. I see I have forty-two seconds. I'm not letting this go. Deb knows this about me. When I believe in something, I don't give it up. We have to do this. I'm giving you these numbers because I'm telling you, we can do this. It's not something we have to live with anymore. Philadelphia is already doing this. I'm going on the road with this. I would respectfully request that our controllers, county and city, once we get this together, I'm putting this together right now. This is, this can be done. I'd like them to score this fiscally and fiduciarily, to see, not whether or not we should do this, can we afford not to. I'm seeking legislative partners, and I'm not going to stop, because we can actually literally save lives and we can do it quickly using existing law. If you give me a nod, if you're interested, let me know. I have a one-pager in your boxes before the end of meeting.
Thank you. Thank you. That exhausts our list of registered speakers. If there's anyone in chambers wishing to speak, please come forward at the sign, provide your name or neighborhood for the record.
Carlino Giampolo, Panther Hollow. Last Tuesday, I spoke about the illegal skate park constructed in the Panther Hollow playground. That testimony is on YouTube on City Channel Pittsburgh, July 15 video timestamp at forty-four minutes, ten seconds. To respect the dignity of another requires respect for one's own personal dignity. Councilmember Barbara Warwick didn't respect her own dignity and didn't respect the dignity of Panther Hollow residents. What right does she have to come into our neighborhood she doesn't represent and build a massive skate park without notice or permits, as if the residents there don't exist? The Sunshine Law exists to protect, protect the dignity of residents. She broke the law. The construction of the illegal skate park was not done by skilled union city workers, but was spearheaded by A.J. Hammond, a student at Pitt with no degree. Incredibly, no plans were submitted to the city and no permits issued. Instead, Councilmember Warwick gave him permission to build whatever he wanted. If any council member supports this illegal skate park because of their own lack of dignity, then this shame will continue to grow. Further exemplifying the lack of dignity and shamefulness of this project, on July 8, I asked A.J. Hammond why he installed a sign inside our playground that reads Boundary Street Park. He said that was the previous name of the playground and provided to him by the Office of Councilmember Warwick. I asked the city's archive office to conduct an investigation. The reply to me said in part, quote, "There is no record anywhere in the municipal record that formally names it Boundary Street Playground or Park." On July 17, and again, without any notification to any Panther Hollow residents, Councilmember Warwick persuaded other council members to rename our playground Oakland Do-It-Yourself Skate Park. How can a playground be renamed when it never had an official name? More egregiously, Councilmember Warwick disrespected the dignity of the neighborhood residents by declaring an official name for their own playground without notice. Resolution Number 351 of 2025 renaming our playground Oakland Do-It-Yourself Skate Park is disgraceful, dishonest, shameful, and flawed, and must be rescinded. For council members whose dignity is fully awake and support our efforts, I urge you to stand tall, stand proud, stand out, and let your voices be heard, both inside and outside of council chambers, to end the shame of the illegal skate park in Panther Hollow. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good morning. My name is Yvonne F. Brown. I live at 715 Mercer Street. That's that senior citizen house up on Bedford. Every week I've been bringing these papers, but I'm going to do a show and tell for you. I want you to remember this name. You remember the ladies in red, when they came, they came and they sat and they listened to everyone, even the homeless woman. They sat and they listened. And I have wrote this. Because, this is for them. This is for the sorority. Because of you, I have renewed hope. I give you praise and honor. These women, educated women with college degrees, sat and listened to the homeless woman, woman, when she talks. But you council people, especially Ms. Warwick, will take. Now, the black woman brought the white homeless man. Okay, you never ran and talked to her, that homeless white man, you ran out there. She's talking to the, talking to him, but then she leaves and comes back and talking. What I'm trying to explain to you, I wish I could talk like him, because he's would be in trouble. Like he said, the dignity, you give us no dignity at all. You're talking amongst yourself, then, then, I wanted to say this, because when I start fussing about this, I do get off key. But I wanted to start off by saying, when I came here July the ninth, that was my son Tony's birthday. I didn't tell you, but that day, remember I came and I was thanking the city workers and the people that have been coming to me, telling me to keep coming down. And I thank you, because that day, usually on his birthday, I wake up, I sing Happy Birthday. I'm sad. But that day, I didn't even think about being sad that day. I came to say, thank you for giving me the want to keep coming, because there's times when I'm walking down that hill, there's, I'm crying. I'm saying, Lord, why won't they help the poor? Now you got your good president talking about how he's going to put all these people to work. All them homeless people that's been walking and, and not eating right, their feet are swollen, they can't work. And if they do get a job, they're not going to be able to keep it. Do you understand? The homeless people need us, and you as council people should be looking at it. Mr. Coghill, I look at you. When they start talking about that cop city, it sounds like something you would say, because you know what I said, when I said to you, you're a businessman. You don't need to be on council. And, and someone said, oh, Yvonne, you're wrong. No, I think you're wrong. Anytime we're up here speaking, and you go back and talk to the people back there. Ms. Smith, even you, and you pretend like you care about us and me, but you don't. And, and, and I said, I had been praying that I was going to come down and thank the people, not fucking kidding. Thank you, everybody that give me hope.
Next speaker, please. Next speaker, please. Seeing no further speakers, we'll move on to the presentation of papers, beginning with Councilman Sharland, Chair of Human Resources.
New papers, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilman Coghill, Chair of Public Safety and Wellness.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Councilman Coghill presents Bill Number 2091, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor, the Director of the Office of Management and Budget, and the Director of the Department of Public Safety to enter into an agreement or agreements with the Pennsylvania Emergency Management Agency for the purpose of receiving grant funds for the Urban Search and Rescue Task Force, grant in an amount not to exceed six million dollars for equipment, equipment storage, training, and related expenses necessary for the Urban Search and Rescue Task Force to meet or exceed the minimum requirements of a Type III Urban Search and Rescue Task Force. Bill Number 2093, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Progen in an Amount Not to Exceed Six Thousand Nine Hundred Ninety Seven Dollars for Calibration and Repairs of Hazardous Materials Detectors.
Thank you. Councilman Coghill, do you wish to waive Rule 8 on Bill 2091 and 2093?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, for paying attention, and I would make a motion to waive the rules for that bill, please.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Bills 2091 and 2093 will be on tomorrow's Standing Committee Agenda. That takes us to Councilwoman Gross, Chair of Innovation, Performance, Asset Management, and Technology. She has no papers. That moves us to Councilman Mosley, Chair of Intergovernmental Educational Affairs.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Councilman Mosley presents Bill Number 2094, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewage Facilities Plan for 933 Penn Avenue at No Cost to the City, and Bill Number 2095, Resolution Repealing Resolution 623 of 2021, Effective September 30 of 2021, which authorizes the Urban Redevelopment Authority of Pittsburgh to acquire all the city's right, title, and interests, if any, and into the publicly-owned properties in the Fourth Ward, City of Pittsburgh, designated in the Deed Registry Office of Allegheny County as Block 11K, Lots 78 and 78 dash 2, 2 and 3 Seneca Street, Council District Number 6, and further authorizing the Pittsburgh Land Bank to acquire all the city's right, title, and interest, if any, and into these parcels at no cost to the city.
Motion to waive Rule 8 on 2095.
Second.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill 2095 will be on tomorrow's Standing Committee Agenda. That moves us to Councilwoman Kail Smith, Chair of Recreation Youth and Senior Services.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Kail Smith presents Bill Number 2109, Ordnance Amending and Supplementing the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances Title I Administrative Article 9 Boards, Authorities, and Commissions Chapter 178E Registered Community Organizations by temporarily suspending the enforcement of Chapter 178E until further action of council.
And that moves us to Councilwoman Erica Strasburger, Chair of Finance and Law.
Thank you, Mr. President. Sorry, I thought you were talking to me.
Councilperson Strasburger presents Bill Number 2096, Ordnance Amending and Supplementing the Pittsburgh Code Title I Administrative Article 9 Boards, Commissions, and Authorities, Chapter 178A Youth Commission and Youth Council by strengthening the commission's alignment with the City of Pittsburgh's structure to ensure that it reflects the diversity of young people across all neighborhoods and communities, thus prioritizing the lived experiences of Pittsburgh's youth to inform the decisions of the city's elected leadership. Bill 2097, Ordnance Amending and Supplementing the Pittsburgh City Code Title I Administrative Article 9 Boards, Commissions, and Authorities, Chapter 179G LGBTQIA+ Commission to strengthen the work of the commission by ensuring a dedicated staffer will oversee the commission's recruitment, budget, recommendations, and event planning. Bill Number 2098, Resolution Providing for the Sale of Certain Property Acquired by the City of Pittsburgh at Tax Sales Items A through N. 3300 Webster Avenue, Council District 6, 5500 Camilla Street, Council District 7, 0 Deary Street, Council District 9, 0 Lincoln Avenue, Council District 9, 2 Oakwood Place, Council District 9, 1617 Sterling Street, Council District 3, 1109 Brayback Street, Council District 1, 0 Egger Street, Council District 1, 1136 Southside Avenue, Council District 1, 0 McClure Avenue, Council District 1, 3302 Fleming Avenue, Council District 1, 3300 Fleming Avenue, Council District 1, 1117 Acacia Lane, Council District 1, and 0 Charles Street, Council District 3. Bill Number 2099, Resolution Repealing An Item in Resolution Number 675 of 2022, Effective Date December 2, 2022, in Order to Rescind the Sale. Bill Number 2100, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of Finance to Accept Deeds Convailing All Right, Title, and Interests in Parcells 46E44 and 46E46 Located at 2716 North Charles Street in the 26th Ward, Council District 6, to the City of Pittsburgh to Advance the Fowler Park Master Plan and Authorizing the Payment of $1 in Exchange for the Parcells.
And Councilwoman Warwick, Chair of Public Works and Infrastructure.
Thanks, President. Thanks, Yvonne.
Councilwoman Warwick presents Bill Number 2101, Resolution Providing for Supplemental Agreement or Agreements with Mackin Engineering Company for Costs Associated with Construction Inspection for the Sylvan Smart Project, Providing for the Payment of the Costs Thereof Not to Exceed Five Hundred Nineteen Thousand Nine Hundred Ninety Eight Dollars and Forty Cent, An Increase of Twenty Eight Thousand Nine Hundred Fifty Dollars From the Previously Executed Agreement As Previously Authorized by Resolution 37 of 2025, reimbursable at eighty percent. Bill Number 2102, Resolution Granting Unto MDK Holdings LLC Their Successors and Associates The Privilege and License to Construct, Maintain, and Use at Their Own Costs and Expenses at No Cost to the City Two Two Hundred and Thirty Three Inch Subterranean Private Water Laterals With Valves and Meters in Comrie Way Serving Property at 4842 Penn Avenue in the Eighth Ward, excuse me, Sum of Council District of the City of Pittsburgh. Bill 2103, Resolution Amending Resolution 103 of 2025, Which Authorized and Amended Agreement or Agreements with Studio Zoo for Costs Associated with the Homewood Park Construction Project by Amending JDE Account Information and Increasing the Total Spend by One Hundred Seventy Six Thousand Six Hundred Nine Dollars and Sixty Cent for a New Not to Exceed Amount of Two Million Forty One Thousand Eighty Two Dollars and Thirty Cent.
Council President, I would like to motion to waive the rules of council on 2101, 2102, and 2103, so that we may discuss them at tomorrow's Standing Committee Agenda.
Is there a second? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Bills 2101, 2102, and 2103 will be on tomorrow's Standing Committee Agenda. That takes us to Councilman Wilson, Chair of National Economic Development.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilman Wilson presents Bill Number 2104, Ordnance Amending and Supplementing the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances Title IV Public Places and Property, Article 18, Municipal Fleet, Chapter 493 Fleet Oversight, Section 49301, Section 49306, to Establish an Annual Fleet Investment and Efficiency Report Requirement to Promote Responsible Use of Public Funds and Vehicle Management. And Bill Number 2110, Resolution Approving the Recommendation Made by the Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure that Isabella Street from Federal Street to Sandusky Street in the Neighborhood of North Shore, 22nd Ward, be paved with asphalt from origin to terminus in accordance with Section 41706 of the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances.
Thank you.
Mr. President.
Councilperson Wilson.
Yes, I like that motion to waive Rule 8 on, was it 20, 2104 and 2110, I believe.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bills 2104 and 2110 will be on tomorrow's Standing Committee Agenda.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I have three bills.
Council President Lavelle presents Bill Number 2105, Resolution Informing Council of the Appointment of Elizabeth Surcone as Assistant Director Operating in Special Revenue in the Office of Management and Budget.
And we need a motion to read, receive, and file?
So move.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Bills have been read, received, and filed?
Bill Number 2106, Communication from Jake Pollak, Director of the Office of Management and Budget, Submitting to City Council the Attached Status Update from the Grants Office for the Week Ended July 18, 2025. And Bill 2107, Communication from City Controller, Rachel Heisler, Submitting a Special Report on a 2025 Update on City Water Fountains dated July 2025.
And we also need a motion to read, receive, and file on these communications.
So move, but I actually like to ask a question back on Bill 2105, on exactly what that position is. What are special, what are special revenues? Does anybody know that?
I can work to get you the answer for that.
Okay. Then can I register an abstention instead until we have that? Thank you.
Our, our budget directors say they're in charge of trust funds.
Then definitely abstain. I'll vote no. I'll vote no. No, can I just say, we've been saying that we need to do something in terms of our trust funds for a very long time, and I think we did away with just a few of them, and so now we're hiring somebody in addition to having the money spent there. I knew you were going to tell me something that you think I'm going to want to hear, but I'm not going to hear.
Okay. So all three have been read, received, and will be filed. That moves us to Reports of Committee for Final Action, beginning with Councilwoman Erica Strasburger, Committee on Finance and Law.
Councilperson Strasburger presents Bill Number 2083, Reported a Committee on Finance and Law for July 16, 2025, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill 2002, Resolution Amending Resolution 119 of 2024, Which Authorizes the Mayor and the City Solicitor on Behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to Enter Into a Professional Consultation Services Agreement with Albert Risk Management Consultants for Insurance Consulting Services by Updating a Legal Vendor Name to Artex Risk Solutions, and to Extend the Term of the Agreement by one year at no additional cost to the city. Bill 2005, Resolution Amending Resolution 273 of 2025, Effective May 7, 2025, entitled, Resolution Authorizing Eleven Open Inn Professional Services Agreements with Five Vendors to Provide Professional Services on an On-Call Basis as Required Related to Special Event Services as Needed by the Various Departments of the City of Pittsburgh. Each Agreement Being at an Amount Not to Exceed, Not to Exceed Seven Hundred Fifty Thousand Dollars Annually for a Three-Year Term, and Providing for Funding of the Costs Thereof by Authorizing an Additional Eight Professional Services Agreements with Five Additional Vendors, for a Total of Nineteen Open Inn Professional Services Agreements with Ten Vendors. Bill Number 2007, Resolution Further Amending Resolution 8-
Bill number two thousand and seven, resolution further amending Resolution eight fifty-seven of two thousand and twenty-three, effective December twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-three, as amended, entitled, Resolution Adopting and Approving the Two Thousand and Twenty-four Capital Budget, the Proposed Two Thousand and Twenty-four Community Development Program and a Two Thousand and Twenty-four through Two Thousand and Twenty-nine Capital Improvement Program by Increasing Maple Avenue Bridge by one hundred twenty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars to account for federal highway administration funding being received at no cost to the city.
You've heard the reading and entitled the bill, is there any discussion? Seeing none, the bill is now ready for final action. All in favor, passes the bill, will vote aye when name is called. Those opposed will vote no, will the clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Sharland.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Mosley.
Aye.
Mrs. Kail Smith.
Aye.
Mrs. Strausberger.
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick.
Hmm, Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle, President.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nos.
Thank you. The bills have been received, the legally required number of votes is passed finally. That moves us to Councilwoman Barbara Warwick presenting the Committee of Public Works and Infrastructure.
Councilwoman Warwick presents Bill number twenty-eighty-four, reported a committee on public works and infrastructure for July sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill number twenty-twenty-five, resolution providing for an amended reimbursement agreement or agreements with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for costs associated with the preliminary design, final design, and right-of-way phases of the Maple Avenue Bridge Project, providing for the payment of the costs thereof not to exceed one million, one hundred thousand dollars, an increase of six hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the previously executed agreement, reimbursable at one hundred percent. This resolution serves to authorize only the amended reimbursement agreement or agreements at no cost to the city. Future resolutions will authorize the project-specific service agreements. Bill twenty-twenty-six, resolution authorizing the mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Works on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to enter into an agreement or agreements with Cosmos Technologies Inc. for professional services related to the renovation of Canard Park, costs not to exceed five hundred eighty-two thousand, nine hundred forty-six dollars and eighty cent over a period of one year. And Bill number twenty-fourty-nine, resolution approving the recommendation made by the Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure that the concrete portion of Second Avenue from Bates Street to Brady Street be paved with asphalt in accordance with Section four seventeen oh six of the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances.
You've heard the reading and entitled the bill, is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bill is now ready for final action. All in favor, passes the bill, will vote aye when name is called. Those opposed will vote no, will the clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Sharland.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Mosley.
Aye.
Mrs. Kail Smith.
Aye.
Mrs. Strausberger.
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle, President.
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero nos.
The bill has been received, the legally required number of votes is passed finally. That moves us to Councilman Bobby Wilson presenting the Committee of Land Use and Economic Development.
Thank you, Mr. President.
And just as a reminder to members, Bill seventeen twenty-five is the negative recommendation on Donny's Place. So if you vote aye, you're voting in favor, as well as defeating the nomination of Donny's Place.
Councilman Wilson presents Bill number twenty-eighty-eight, reported a committee on land use and economic development for July sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, with a negative recommendation. Bill seventeen fifty-two, resolution providing for the designation as a historic structure under Title eleven of the Code of Ordinances, that certain structure known as Donny's Place located at twelve twenty-six Haron Avenue in the Polish Hill neighborhood, Fifth Ward, City of Pittsburgh. The owner of the property does not support the nomination, and there is no cost to the city.
We can, we can take them all.
Take them all.
Yeah.
And Bill number twenty-eighty-five, reported a committee on land use and economic development for July sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill sixteen ninety-eight, ordinance amending the Pittsburgh Code Title Nine, zoning, Article Four, Chapter nine oh nine oh one P, SP nine Bakery Square, amending the certain provisions of Chapter nine oh nine oh one P and by the addition of new sections nine oh nine oh one P one C three G. And Bill seventeen twenty-three, ordinance amending the Pittsburgh Code Title Nine, zoning, Article One, Section nine oh two oh three, zoning map, by changing from HC Highway Commercial District to SP nine Bakery Square District, certain property roughly bounded by Penn Avenue, East Liberty Boulevard, and the Pittsburgh Regional Transit East Busway, all in the Allegheny County Block and Lot System, eleventh Ward, and by changing from UI Urban Industrial District to SP nine Bakery Square District, that certain property roughly bounded by Penn Avenue and the existing easternmost boundary of the SP nine Bakery Square District in the Allegheny County Block and Lot System, twelfth Ward, and by changing from HC Highway Commercial District to UI Urban Industrial District, that certain property roughly bounded by the northwestern boundary of the SP nine Bakery Square District and Norfolk Southern Rail Line in the Allegheny County Block and Lot System, eleventh Ward. And Bill two thousand and four, resolution providing for an amended agreement or agreements with Action Housing, Inc. for costs associated with the Emergency Rental Assistance Program, providing for the payment of the costs thereof not to exceed fifteen million, nine hundred forty thousand, one hundred four dollars and thirty-five cent, an increase of twelve thousand, six hundred eighty-six dollars and thirty-five cent from the previously executed agreement.
You've heard the reading and entitled the bills, is there any discussion?
Mr. President, it, it is vote aye to confirm the negative recommendation, correct?
Correct.
I heard you say that, but I just wanna make sure that that's what.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, uh, the pass of the bill will vote aye when name is called. Those opposed will vote no, will the clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Sharland.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Mosley.
Uh, I'm gonna recuse myself on seventeen fifty-two due to a potential conflict of interest, and aye on all following bills.
Mrs. Kail Smith.
Aye.
Mrs. Strausberger.
I will recuse myself from Bill seventeen fifty-two and aye on all others.
Um, Mrs. Warwick. Mrs. Warwick. Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle, President.
Aye. Sorry. Aye, sorry.
Seven ayes on Bill seventeen fifty-two and two, I guess that would be abstains or recu- recusals, and nine ayes on Bills sixteen ninety-eight, seventeen twenty-three, and two thousand and four.
The bills have been received, the legally required number of votes is passed finally. Councilwoman Gross.
Thank you, Mr. President. Madam's clerk, what, may I have my comments from Wednesday's Standing Committee on seventeen fifty-two brought forward into the record? Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you. That moves us to Councilwoman Teresa Kail Smith presenting the Committee of Recreation, Youth, and Senior Services.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Kail Smith presents Bill number twenty-eighty-six, reported a committee on recreation, youth, and senior services for July sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill twenty-fifty-one, resolution amending Resolution five sixty-eight of two thousand and twenty-four, which authorized the City of Pittsburgh to enter into an agreement or agreements with New Sunrise for the management and disbursement of grassroots and small-scale investments for the City of Pittsburgh's Food Justice Fund by naming grant recipients and award amounts as selected by the Food Justice Fund Governance Committee not to exceed one million, six hundred fifty thousand dollars.
You've heard the reading and entitled the bills, is there any discussion? Councilwoman Smith.
Thank you, I just wanna, um, thank everyone for their patience while we tried to work through some of this, and I thank Councilwoman Gross for sitting on the panel, although, uh, we had some discussions this week about it. Um, but I do wanna say that, although I'm putting this forward today, 'cause I don't wanna hold up anybody else from getting food into the community, and I realize that these grants aren't all just for getting food into the community, but I think right now with the way people are struggling, that should've been the absolute focus, is getting food into the communities where people are needing it the most. It's great to help businesses, it's great to make sure that we're doing, you know, certain things in neighborhoods, but in the meantime, we have people that are hungry and, um, struggling right now in this economy, so I really think that should've been the focus of this pot of money. But I think we'll learn, I mean, I think you learn when you do these kinds of things, but I also think we should get out of the grant-making business, but having said that, um, since we are doing this, I do wanna say that I am gonna put some amendment forward, I'm trying to find additional funding, and we'll see how I can legally make sure that, um, Save a Life Today, the parent place, that feeds three hundred and twenty-four families every single month, how they were not eligible or didn't get into, they said they weren't, they didn't apply in time, she has an email saying, um, that she, uh, but they thanked her for applying on time, so I, I think that there's a lot of conflict and confusion of what happened there, so I'm gonna legally make sure that I can, you know, allocate some funding from a different source to that program and to make sure that they continue to feed people in the community, but having said that, um, I do think when you're doing this kinda stuff, it really, it's, they're supposed to send it to council as an advisory, we should've had this in advance, so we really could've worked through it and made sure we understood all the concerns and issues, but having said that, I know, I hated when I was council president and I, people talk like I do, so I'm gonna shut up. So, I'm just gonna say, but for now, what I would do wanna say is that I want to thank everybody for working on this and hope that we get it right, and, and I hope that, um, I can help Sister Mary, um, help the many people that she helps every single month, and the Open Door, they work together on this event.
Thank you, Councilwoman Gross.
Thank you, appreciate it, and I, I just wanted to say, I offered to help Councilwoman Kail Smith in any way to find the right way to support the other group in her district, but I, I wanna just say briefly, um, I really believe this council has helped build the food capacity, grow the food capacity in the city in the last, let's say, five years or so, um, and so this was a really an important contribution, it was less than one percent of our American Rescue Plan dollars. The City of Pittsburgh received three hundred and thirty-five million dollars of American Rescue Plan dollars from the federal government, um, and the Food Justice Fund was only three million, so it's slightly under one percent of the total dollars funded for food. Um, and I think, to me, these investments, and the investments, other investments that we've made with city employees, with expanding, um, community gardens, investing through the URA and small businesses that also are in the food system, that we're really helping do economic and community development, right? This is the same that we do for other sectors, and it's really, it's jobs, it's building wealth, but it's also building the business capacity, um, so that we are not just dependent on international supply chains, which is the lesson we learned in COVID, uh, but also that we just don't allow our internal city business networks to die because we're reliant on national or international business, large box, uh, you know, service providers, the same thing is true in, in other retail sectors, in other production, we used to produce and manufacture and distribute more food inside the city, and I hope that we continue these kinds of investments, um, throughout, it is our, our capacity as a city, um, and so I just wanna thank my colleagues for supporting these, um, as well, thank you.
Thank you, any further discussion? Seeing none, the bill is now ready for final action. All in favor, the passes of the bill, will vote aye when name is called. Those opposed will vote no, will the clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Sharland.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Mosley.
Aye.
Mrs. Kail Smith.
Aye.
Mrs. Strausberger.
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle, President.
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero nos.
The bill has been received, the legally required number of votes is passed finally, and finally, Councilman Cory Mosley presenting the Committee of Intergovernmental Educational Affairs.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Councilman Mosley presents Bill number twenty-eighty-seven, reported a committee on intergovernmental and educational affairs for July sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill two thousand and three, resolution authorizing a cooperation agreement or agreements with Allegheny County Economic Development to collaboratively manage non-congregant shelter services related to the home ARP program at no cost to the city. Bill two thousand and six, resolution authorizing the issuance of three warrants payable in favor of connect congregating of neighboring communities for one-year membership dues for all three branches of government in an amount not to exceed twenty-seven thousand, five hundred and sixty-three dollars. Bill twenty-twenty-seven, resolution repealing six seventeen of two thousand and eighteen, effective September twenty of two thousand and eighteen, authorizing the Urban Redevelopment Authority of Pittsburgh to acquire all the city's right, title, and interest, if any, and into the publicly-owned property in twelfth Ward, City of Pittsburgh, designated in the deed registry office of Allegheny County, block one twenty-five A, lot two seventy-seven, zero Auburn Street, Council District Number Nine, at no cost to the city. Bill twenty-twenty-eight, resolution approving execution of a contract for disposition by sale of land between the URA of Pittsburgh and the Pittsburgh Land Bank for the sale of block ten N, lot three forty-four, Fifth Ward, City of Pittsburgh, four oh three Grove Street, Council District Number Six, at no cost to the city. Bill twenty-twenty-nine, resolution amending Resolution six twenty-three of two thousand and twenty, effective December ninth, two thousand and twenty, entitled, Resolution Authorizing the Urban Redevelopment Authority of Pittsburgh to acquire all the city's right, title, and interest, if any, and into the following publicly-owned properties in the tenth Ward, City of Pittsburgh, designated in the deed registry office of Allegheny County, as block fifty E, lot twenty-one, block fifty F, lots one oh one N one thirty, and block fifty K, lots eighty-nine and ninety-four, located at four twenty-four North Matilda Street, forty-nine thirty-eight, and fifty-one twenty Rosetta Street, forty-nine twenty-one, and five thousand and one Broad Street, respectively, Council District Number Nine, by removing block fifty K, lot ninety-four, five thousand and one Broad Street, Council District Number Nine, at no cost to the city. Bill twenty-thirty, resolution approving execution of a deed by and between the URA of Pittsburgh and the City of Pittsburgh for the sale of block one twenty-eight R, lot two hundred, fourteenth Ward, City of Pittsburgh, Commercial Avenue Frick Park Expansion, Council District Number Five, at no cost to the city. Bill twenty-thirty-one, resolution approving execution of a contract for disposition by sale of land between the URA of Pittsburgh and the Pittsburgh Land Bank for the sale of block nine S, lots one eighty-one and one eighty-seven, third Ward, City of Pittsburgh, two twenty and two twenty-one Hillside Drive, Council District Number Six, at no cost to the city. Bill twenty-thirty-two, resolution approving execution of a contract for disposition by sale of land between the URA of Pittsburgh and the Pittsburgh Land Bank for the sale of block twenty-six N, lots fifty-one, fifty-two, fifty-three, and fifty-four, Fifth Ward, City of Pittsburgh, Milwaukee Street, Council District Number Six, at no cost to the city. Bill twenty-thirty-three, resolution approving execution of a deed by and between the URA of Pittsburgh and the City of Pittsburgh for the sale of block eighty-eight M, lot two hundred, fourteenth Ward, City of Pittsburgh, sixteen fourteen through sixteen eighty Parkview Boulevard, Council District Number Five, at no cost to the city.
Aye.
Bill twenty-thirty-four, resolution authorizing the Pittsburgh Land Bank to acquire all the city's right, title, and interest, if any, and into the publicly-owned property twelfth Ward, City of Pittsburgh, designated in the deed registry office of Allegheny County, as block one twenty-five A, lot two seventy-seven, zero Auburn Street, Council District Number Nine, at no cost to the city. Bill twenty-thirty-five, resolution authorizing the Pittsburgh Land Bank to acquire all the city's right, title, and interest, if any, and into the publicly-owned properties in the thirtieth Ward, City of Pittsburgh, designated in the deed registry office of Allegheny County, as block fourteen R, lot seventy-eight, block fourteen L, lot ninety-four, and block thirty-three A, lot three forty-nine, sixty-three Amanda Avenue, one oh three Jacunda Street, and four oh eight Moore Avenue, Council District Number Three, at no cost to the city. Bill twenty-thirty-six, resolution authorizing the Pittsburgh Land Bank to acquire all the city's right, title, and interest, if any, and into the publicly-owned property in the thirtieth Ward, City of Pittsburgh, designated in the deed registry office of Allegheny County, as block thirty-three F, lot thirteen, two thirty-six Moore Avenue, Council District Number Three, at no cost to the city. Bill twenty-thirty-seven, resolution authorizing the Pittsburgh Land Bank to acquire all the city's right, title, and interest, if any, and into the publicly-owned property in the tenth Ward, City of Pittsburgh, designated in the deed registry office of Allegheny County, as block fifty K, lot ninety-four, five thousand and one Broad Street, Council District Number Nine, at no cost to the city. Bill twenty-fifty-nine, resolution amending Resolution four seventy-five of two thousand and twenty-four, which authorized an amended agreement or agreements with AE seven Pittsburgh LLC for costs associated with the four oh one two Boulevard of the Allies Project by amending JDE account information and by increasing the total spend by twenty-seven thousand, six hundred fifty dollars and forty-four cent for a new not-to-exceed amount of six hundred by $27,650.44 for a new not-to-exceed amount of $602,390.75. Bill Number 2080, resolution authorizing the Pittsburgh Land Bank to acquire all the city's right title and interests, if any, and into the publicly owned properties in the 5th Ward, City of Pittsburgh, designated in the deed registry office of Allegheny County, as Block 27B, Lot 365, Block 10D, Lot 381, and Block 25S, Lot 204, 749 Shawnee Street, 2926 Webster Avenue, and 2905 Bedford Avenue, Council District Number 6, at no cost to the city.
You've heard the reading and entitled the bills. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the bill is not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Would a clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Sharland?
Aye.
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Mosley?
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith?
No, on Bill 2059, aye on all other bills. And I didn't talk for you.
Mrs. Strasburger?
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick? Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Lavell President?
Aye.
Aye, or nine ayes, zero nos on Bills 2003, 2006, 2027, 2028, 2029, 2030, 2031, 2032, 2033, 2034, 2035, 2036, 2037, and 2080. Eight ayes, one no on Bill 2059.
Well, that was impressive, Ash.
The bills have been received legally required number of votes is passed finally. That takes us to motions, resolutions, or anything from members? If not, Councilman Mosley?
Yeah, I just wanted to congratulate Paradise Gray and the folks from the Pittsburgh Hip-Hop Museum for sponsoring this week. It's the first official hip-hop week in the city of Pittsburgh. They had a really great event Sunday night in the Hill District with Paradise Gray as well as Sly Jock, the legendary DJ who introduced hip-hop to the city of Pittsburgh on WAMO in the early 1980s, as well as Prime Minister Pete Nice from the legendary hip-hop group Third Base was there. And they're going to be doing events all weekend. I think it's apropos that Nas will be performing with the Pittsburgh Symphony on Saturday night, and EPMD will be performing in the Hill District on Sunday night. So it's a great week for the city to celebrate hip-hop culture as well as Pittsburgh's unique relationship that was set on Sunday night at the event. It was called Paradise at the Crossroads at the Kaufman Center. So that actually the first publication that ever put hip-hop written in an article was the Pittsburgh Courier in 1979 with hip-hop artists from New York. Before that, it was just more considered just rap music, rap music. But the first time the word hip-hop was used in a journalistic publication was in the Pittsburgh Courier in 1979. So I just wanted to congratulate. Everyone knows how important hip-hop culture is to me, so I want to give them a shout-out for not only celebrating hip-hop, but specifically celebrating Pittsburgh's unique role in supporting hip-hop and creating hip-hop.
Thank you. I didn't know that. Thank you. Councilman Smith?
I wasn't going to say anything about this, but I just want to, and you probably never hear me say this again, but I want to thank Bethany Hallam for looking into a situation with a guard at the county jail who I think one of the media stations did a report, but people had sent me a video, and I'm sure they sent it to all of us, about a guard just totally, I mean, I can't, I, I can't believe some of the things that we heard him say on this video and to think that he would even just be laid off or just temporarily out of work instead of permanently. I mean, I don't think he should be around people at this point. So I do want to say thank you to Bethany Hallam because, one, I immediately contacted her when I saw it because she sits on the jail board, but also because I wanted to make sure somebody with some authority would follow up and continue to watch what happens there. Because, I mean, there's First Amendment rights, but there's also this to me crosses, you know, beyond that. So I hope that, I want to thank her for that, and I wanted to make sure I said it publicly because she did do something immediately, and I think it deserved recognition, but also to apologize to the people that saw it and heard it. Just all the hate we've heard this weekend, a church statue vandalized, and this incident with a guard at the county jail, just all this difference. I just think people need to bring it down a little bit. The temperature is just so volatile right now. So that's it. That's all I want to say. I want to thank you, thank you to Bethany Hallam. Second time you heard it.
Thank you. Anything else? If not, we have meeting announcements. Councilwoman?
Apologies, Council President. I just quickly wanted to say, I don't know if we've, we've mentioned this before, but there was a young man, an Alderweireld graduate, Jacob Seerlin. I do not know him or his family, but he was, he lost his life in an auto accident in a car crash recently on Beechwood Boulevard, and it's just a very sad thing, and, you know, it's really shaken the community in Scroll Hill and at Alderweireld. And so I just wanted to just mention it and, you know, just say that it is incredibly heartbreaking, and I know that all of our hearts go out to his family. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilwoman Warwick. We'll have a brief moment of silence. Thank you. Councilman Mosley?
Yeah, I really appreciate the councilwoman, you know, mentioning that. It has, you know, really impacted, you know, Point Breeze, Scroll Hill, as well as the Alderweireld community. One of my son's teammates at Alderweireld and a kid that I coached on my AAU team was one of the kids who got injured. Fortunately, he was not as seriously injured as some of the others. But again, you know, my family goes out to Jacob. I know the funeral was on Sunday, and, you know, I know my son has been impacted. You know, he knew every, all four young people that were in the car. And again, one is his high school teammate and someone that he's known a long time from Scroll Hill baseball as well as playing AAU baseball. So again, I wanted to just echo, you know, the very thoughtful words that Councilwoman Warwick shared, and my thoughts and prayers go out to the family. I know tonight I will be with Domi at the scene doing the crash analysis this evening to learn more about what happened that night, and I'll be sharing that with the public after tonight's analysis.
Thank you. Hard transition, but meeting announcements. This afternoon, with sessions at 2:00 and 3:00, council will hold a briefing on the Pittsburgh Water Rate Filing with the PUC. Tomorrow, Wednesday, July 23rd, at 9:30, council will hold a pre-agenda interview for the Housing Opportunity Fund Board, and then at 10:00, council will meet for the Standing Committee meeting. To register to speak, please do so by 9:00 AM Wednesday morning. Also, tomorrow at 2:30, council will hold a broadcast post-agenda on emergency readiness and response, which is chaired by Councilwoman Strasburger. To register to speak of these meetings, please fill out the sign-up form on the council meeting webpage by the deadline or call the clerk's office at 412-255-2138. With that, we need a motion to approve the minutes and adjourn the meeting.
So, hold.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.